Good evening and welcome to the Board of Selecting meeting for May 17th, 2021. Time is now 6:30 PM. If we could stand for the Pledge of Leading.
The Pledge of Leading is to the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, unbroken, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, public announcements. Alex Hagerty, do you have any?
Yes, I do, Mr. Chairman. And just so, in health-related news, the Commonwealth of Massachusetts announced today that effective May 29th, face coverings will be rescinded, and the advisory will be consistent with the CDC announcement on May 14th, which pertained, quote, "Anyone who is vaccinated can participate in indoor and outdoor activities, large or small, without wearing a mask or physically distancing," end quote. For clarification, Massachusetts will adopt the new CDC guidelines on May 29th. In addition, all businesses are available for reopening as well on May 29th, and allowed at 100% capacity. Businesses are urged to follow best practices, as our Abington businesses always do. And just a point for our businesses, a lot of our businesses in town are hiring, so make sure you get your applications in. Face coverings in nursing homes, healthcare facilities, hospitals, schools, and public transportation are not included in the mask mandate lift. Face coverings will remain required indoor for staff and students of 12 through K schools and early education providers. Also, announced today by Lieutenant Governor Polito, effective tomorrow, May 18th, youth sports, athletes under age 18, face coverings will no longer be required. On May 29th as well, all youth and amateur sports restrictions will be lifted. Lastly, in health-related news, the Massachusetts State of Emergency will be lifted on June 15th. Until such time, continue to wear your masks as advised, wash your hands, vaccinations are safely encouraged, and be smart and safe. This lifting of facial coverings and social distancing restrictions are only made possible by the determination, patience, and understanding of our own town leaders and you, the residents of Abington. To everyone, thank you for doing your part to help keep Abington safe during these unprecedented times. We are reaching the end of the dark tunnel and embracing the beautiful ray of colors and lights ahead. Together, we are going to come out of the COVID-19 pandemic stronger than ever before. That's all I have for public announcements, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Alex. Mike, any public announcements?
I did, but Alex took up all the time, so I'll wait. I'm only kidding, Alex.
Don't blame the new guy.
Thank you for that, Alex. I'm all set. Thank you, Kevin.
Like I said, Alex, we're gonna blame you when you're not the new guy, but that's all right. I only have one, and it's very short, nowhere near as long as Alex's, and I want to wish our Vice Chairman, who couldn't be here tonight, a very happy birthday. No, he's not here. It's got nothing to do with it, though.
All right. Next is public comments. Does anyone have any public comments? What's on the agenda tonight? Just come up and state your name and your address.
Hi, Pat Kearney, 652 Adams Street. I know the Board's gonna be hearing a couple of cases tonight of issues similar to the one that I'm dealing with, 662 Adams Street. You know, it just seems like there's some issues. The building department is inundated with a ton of work these days, and it seems like maybe some things are slipping through the cracks. There seems to be a lot of similarities in a lot of these problems and the North Quincy Street problem. I know the Board knows a lot of where the issues are coming from, and I just hope they are up to the task of doing what needs to be done to correct them and hopefully correct these issues. I want to thank you. I've always felt like the Board has listened to me and given me a fair shake on everything, and I just want to thank you for that, and, excuse me, hope that you guys are up to the task with this. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Kearney. Anyone else? Anyone else have any comments to make for what's on the agenda tonight? Just come up, state your name and address, please.
My name is Bill Creighton, 53 Vineyard Road. I'm here about the Helm Street issue, and it might be more appropriate for my comments to be stated at the time of that.
Yes, that's fine. We'll have you come up when we get to the agenda item.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Bill. Okay, public appointments is none. All the business, we don't have any at this time, Scott. First, action discussion item is vote to approve the minutes of May 10th, 2021.
Motion to approve.
I'll second the motion.
The motion and a second. Any further discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous. Okay, next up is the appointments to the Police Chief Search Committee. Scott, do you want to touch on this real quick?
Sure. Yep, so we got, I think, 10 responses in our request for anybody who was interested. All very good responses, and I'm glad to see, you know, we had so many people that are eager to get involved and help out with this. I gave a list of the top four that got the most votes to Alex, and I asked the moderator to make one selection. The moderator's selection was Peter Walters. So Peter Walters, you will be the first one on the committee. And then I think Alex will make a motion with the other top four. What I did is I asked each of the selectmen, I gave them a copy of everybody who was interested, and I asked them to submit to me what their top candidates would be, and this is the compilation that I put together.
Okay. Want me to read what the Board decided?
Yes, could you?
All right, here.
Or your motion.
Or motion. Okay, so I'd like to make a motion to appoint the following four to the Police Chief Search Committee. Helena Rosendez, Beth Owens, Christine Hendrickson, and John McNeil.
I will second that.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion on this?
And I...
Yeah.
Also, does the Board have any other nominations they want to make outside of this? Scott, what were you gonna say?
Well, I just wanted to say, you know, again, thank you to everybody that did submit the interest in this. I will be reaching out to the committee members before the end of this week, probably within the next couple of days. The first task of this committee will be, we'll meet with the consultant, and we'll discuss what their role will be going forward. And then my probably first meeting will be with the police union. So this committee will be tasked with finding out from them what sort of issues and what sort of input that, you know, they would like to have in developing questions and, you know, sort of helping us put together the profile of what we're looking for. We'll also meet with other, you know, sectors of the community to try and do the same. And like I said, we'll be probably having our first meeting to do that next week at some point. And I'll report back, I believe, two feet, there's a subcommittee in here, which was Alex Hagerty and Mike?
No.
And yourself. Okay, so I think you will be asked to, you know, be present during those also.
Okay. So we have a motion and a second. Again, does the Board have any other further motions that they want to make? Any motions for any other members? Okay. All right, this time, all in favor of Alex Hagerty's motion to appoint Helena Rosendez, Beth Owens, Christine Hendrickson, and John McNeil to the search committee? Say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous. Next up is an update on the water issues by Joel Lepoint. Joel, if you could just come up and speak.
Good evening. As you know, we sent out the public education letters last month. Just to give you a little background on that, PFOS is a combination of six man-made compounds used in manufacturing. It's found in firefighting foam, moisture-resistant, stain-resistant materials, scotch guards on upholstery, and carpeting. It's used in fiery tot and children's clothing, pajamas. Other products include laundry detergents, perfume, lipstick, nail polish. It's basically in everything. It used to be in the old food takeout containers. So it was banned 30 years ago in the United States, but it's still in a lot of imported things that come into the country. That's how it migrates through the environment and it gets into the food and the water supply. In October, the Mass Department of Environmental Protection enacted a new regulation and set the maximum contaminant level for PFOS-6 to 20 pots per trillion, well below the federal standard at 70 pots per trillion. They also required all public water systems serving 10,000 to 50,000 people to begin sampling in April of 2021. Being proactive, the Avenue Rockland Joint Water Works started sampling in January, and during routine sampling in February, they confirmed an elevated level of PFOS-6 at the Hingham Street Reservoir in Rockland. This is one of our three entry points that supply our distribution system. The elevated level came back at 23.4 pots per trillion, higher than the 20 pots per trillion state mandate, but well below the federal level of 70 pots per trillion. PFOS levels at two locations, Great Sandy Pond and Pembroke, and the Myers Zev Water Treatment Plant in Abbotton, were well below the 20 pots per trillion. We have collected our third sample in March. This allowed us to complete our first quarter testing. The March results came back at 21.8, about 20% reduction since we started a new treatment process. We're still over the MCL of 20 pots per trillion. This will now trigger a public notice explaining our first quarter average ended up being 22.8. That's the three months combined they averaged out. Even though we sent out a public education information letter that included our Month 1 and Month 2 results to comply with the new drinking water regulations, we are sending out a public notice that quarterly average was above the 20 pots per trillion. That letter's due to go out either Wednesday or Thursday. It's in printing now. With the elevated sample at the Hingham Street Plant, we took immediate action by notifying DEP and involving our engineers to quickly develop a potential short-term method of water treatment. We developed a treatment technique, which is the addition of a powdered activated carbon to the raw water basin inside the treatment plant. Once this was approved and permitted by DEP, we started adding the pack, and we saw 20% reduction. And even more in April, our April sample came back at 20.4 pots per trillion. So we missed it by .4 pots per trillion. So we're heading in the right direction. We worked with our engineers, we petitioned DEP, and they just granted today another permit so we can move that pack injection. We hired divers, they went out into the reservoir where our intake pipe was. We put a tap into the pipe so we can inject it directly into the intake pipe. That way, it has more time to do its stuff all the way through the treatment plant. Hopefully, this will bring us down below. Like I said, we're heading in the right direction for a short-term fix. It's important to know, we did not cause this problem, and there's no way we could have prevented the problem. The Avenue Joint Water Works is committed to delivering safe and reliable drinking water to our customers. We're acting in the public's best interest and taking all necessary steps to address the PFOS. This problem's going to be statewide and countrywide. This is not just an isolated Abington problem. I know President Biden's new bill that he's putting in right now, he's got over $10 billion for PFOS remediation in the United States. We did receive a grant from DEP where we started our testing early. We got $199,000 for the design of a final fix. That's mostly for Myers Zev, which we are running a pilot program down there back in October. We were developing a fourth well at Myers Zev. We had a test for the PFOS. The PFOS was, I think, 28 pots per trillion, but back in October, the legal was 70. We didn't fire up that well. Instead, we tried to do a pilot program with DEP where we turned one of our green sand filters into a carbon filter. That's been running since November, and we've been under 10 pots per trillion. So basically, that's gonna be our permanent fix at Myers Zev, and it'll probably be a permanent fix at the Hingham Street. The problem with it is naturally the money. Hingham Street, our engineers gave us ballpark estimate just to set up for our 1,600 gallons a minute. We need two 20-by-12 vessels to set them up and pipe them. It's $750,000. That's not putting them inside a building. Naturally, by winter, they're gonna have to be inside the building. We're hoping right now our short-term fix with the pack is gonna carry us for a year or so. Then we're gonna have to address the Myers Zev, because we have to get that plant back to where it was. So we'll end up getting two more vessels for there also, and they're gonna have to be housed. So that's what we're looking at for a long-term fix. We got the one grant. They just came out with a second round of grants Friday. The first round is going out July 8th. We're gonna reply for that. That will grant, if we do get lucky enough to get it, will cover what we've put into this so far, trying to quick-term remediation of the problem. Like I said, we're early, so there ain't, hopefully, not too many towns that are already applying for the grants, but we're pushing this hard, so.
Is that a federal grant or a state grant?
This is DEP state grant. Baker and Polito just released $2 million. I think our maximum we can get is $150,000 per town. And then also, I know that the American Rescue Plan came out with some money for the towns. I don't know what the town plans on spending some of that, but we're in line. You put us in line, Scott.
I'll tee you up.
Just different scenarios. We're scrambling, trying to figure out our long-term goal.
So you said Myers Zev. Did you do another well there, and then you...
We were developing well number four. We have three wells. So we did receive a Mass Housing grant a couple of years ago to design a fourth well so we could get more gallonage out of that. We're .25 million gallons a day under what we could pull out of there. We just can't pull it out with the three wells. So when we designed that well, there was a PFOS issue in that well. We shut the plant down for three months until we were still below the state. We shut it down for three months, designed it, so we could do a pilot program, get permitted through DEP. Now we're back running again. Like I said, we usually run on four filters. Now we're only running on three, so the capacity's cut again.
So we get another filter there, then you'd be running the four.
We'll end up getting two there, so you could have a redundancy, like one filter, one media gotta be replaced, you can run the other filter. The plant does not have to shut down. That's the long-term goal at Hingham Street. That's why we'll need at least two, so we can run. And it's important to note, too, 99% of the water that Abington residents are receiving is from Pembroke, Sandy Bottom, and Myers Zev Treatment Plant. So you're not even getting this Hingham Street water. Even if you are, one of the methods DEP approves is blending the water. So if you have two wells, one doesn't pass and one does, you could blend them together and bring them down, you know? So whatever water's coming from the Hingham Street reservoir into Abington, it's getting blended. You know, legally, we can't, you know, DEP mandates us to notify everybody in our system. So that's where we stand with the PFOS.
Keep up the good work. Just on the shortage, you have someone looking into that, consultants at this point?
Yep.
So what's the, just for the people at home, what's the plan for that?
The salt field? For what?
For the consultants looking into the water shortage?
Yeah, H2O engineering. We hired to do a supply and demand study. Last year, we were way over our withdrawal permit. The residential was so high, we're assuming it was because everybody was home from COVID. So what they do, they take a three-year average, and it looks like we were below it. But just with the reservoir heights and what the supply and demand's gonna be down the line, we have maybe, I'm gonna say, four projects in Abbotton, maybe three or four in Rockland, that we have given water to that haven't utilized the water, and it's around 50 million gallons a day. So that will all get taken into consideration, and he'll come back with a ruling whether, you know, we're still on a withdrawal permit. Are we in a position to give out more water or not? Me personally, the reservoir's never recovered from last year, the drought. In the year before, we had no snow. This year, we had very minimal snow. The state did declare that we weren't in a drought anymore last week, but if you take a ride over the reservoir, we're down eight feet from where we were last May. And we almost, it was pretty scary in October last year with that. You could see the intake pipe coming into the plant, you know? So for our precautions, we're leaving the total water ban on right now, just to hopefully, you know, slow people down and we don't have to, you know, a lot of it could have been the COVID, too, but we can't take that chance.
Thank you.
Go on.
Thank you.
Thanks, Joe.
All right, so next up on the agenda is the food truck rodeo location. So we have now had two food truck rodeos. I believe most of the Board, if not the whole Board, has attended. Seems to be going pretty well, but could have someone get up and speak on that?
Hi, I'm June from the Social Food Truck Association, and this is Katie.
Hi.
How you doing?
So yeah, we've had two of them. The first one was rainy, and we still had a ton of people come. So we probably underestimated the pent-up demand. All the food truck events are kind of crazy right now. A lot of people are coming out. So we had a beautiful day on last Wednesday, and the parking lot was quite full, and we had to turn away a lot of people. And that's after the DPW gave us, I think, 29 more spaces?
Thirty-nine.
Thirty-nine at Griffin Dairy Farm. So we had a police detail, but I ended up having to do traffic as well. So it was pretty busy. So we had gotten together at Griffin Dairy Farm and talked about different locations, and we were hoping to maybe move to the abandoned North School, I think it's called.
Okay.
Because there's more parking there, and I think the trucks can park on the grass there by the baseball field, Baseball Diamond, and the rest of the parking could be used for the guests.
So do you know how many parked spaces are at Griffin's, and then how many are at the North School? Do you know the numbers, or...
I think at Griffin, with the additional ones, about 65, was that right?
Eighty-two at Griffin's and another 40 at Patterson.
Okay.
To answer your question, I don't know exactly how many are at North School, but I believe more than that.
Okay. The Police Chief or the Fire Chief, do you know how many are at the North School, or...
I don't. I didn't take a count on it.
I mean, I went through and did a rough count, but I just didn't know if you guys had an exact number on it.
No, the other thing is, you could create more parking spaces using part of the field. The trucks would be on a far corner of the field. You could then create more spaces, but I'm not sure how many spaces you could create, a substantial number.
And was there any other places that you looked to move the food truck rodeo to, or did you specifically just look at the North School?
There were three suggested locations. So one of them was the North School. The other one was the Senior Center.
Yep.
And that didn't seem ideal with the pickleball courts and the dog park. It was kind of not great. And the other one was, what was the other one?
Beaverbrook.
Beaverbrook. And we wrote over there, and again, the busing company?
North River.
North River.
Yep.
Just having to share the location with sports, you know, I think it would just be another, you know, kind of situation to deal with and go through. We weren't totally sure. But I do assume on a Wednesday from 4:00 to 7:00, we would definitely be sharing the space?
It just seemed like the empty spot where there's no competing sports or anything like that seemed like the best location to us.
So, rough count, I mean, and I could be off, but I went through the North School, and I counted 43 spots in one lot, and then I think 10 or 12 in the other, which is even less than what we have at Griffin's Dairy. That's why I was just, I was trying to pinpoint it. I know we could put the trucks in the grass, but I don't...
I think you had counted at least 75. I didn't want to say the number because I wasn't positive, but like I said, that's just marked spots now, but I believe we could get quite a few more with doing some lines on the grass.
Okay. I don't know if anyone, if the Board had any input on this, or what your thoughts were. Did you happen to look up here, maybe, like where the bandstand is and this area?
I had proposed that location as well. I have family in Abington, and that's kind of like their first thought. But I believe John from the DPW said that he had come by last Wednesday in hopes to show landscapers around, and he could not find parking because of a track meet. So I think, again, it was more or less having to share the space. I mean, it's beautiful. I would love it, but I just think, again, we're sharing the space there, and, you know, from now until the end of June, it just doesn't seem too realistic here as well.
Yeah, I mean, I know we have soccer at the middle school, but I don't know what we have up here. Was there a track meet? Is that a weekly thing? Does the Board know?
There was soccer up here, isn't it? We're at soccer 5:00 to 7:00.
Is that up at this Riley Field, or is that the high school?
In front and the Turf Fields.
But I mean, it's not up at the field with the bandstand, correct?
But they might be having some high school stuff.
Okay.
They could have high school stuff.
Yeah.
Yeah. I mean, that's my only concern with the North School. I think it's a very...
Yeah. I don't think we're gaining that much.
We're not gaining, and I think, I don't know from a logistics standpoint, again, from fire and police, would that be, would we have to get more manpower there? I mean, that's a...
No, I mean, North School would be probably better logistically if you could fit all the traffic in here, because you've separated yourselves from the intersection at Central and Plymouth, which backs up around the commute time. So logistically, I think it's a better location, but I just don't know how much traffic and how much, you know, as our space grows, like a goldfish, right, that people are gonna grow to the space. So I don't know how many we can fit into North School, but on our end, it would be better than Griffin's right now.
And we would have an officer crossing people on Plymouth Street if someone chooses to park them. One of the other parking lots over there?
I think, Ellis, we try to limit any parking on some of those, or we try to limit that crossing as much as possible. If we shut down the entrance and exit coming out on Route 58, it would just leave the entrance and exit onto Adams Street, which would be probably better for us, and traffic could come and go on that entrance, shutting 58 completely down, and then allowing them to go to each way, and then be dealt with with a stop sign or whatever else there. So, but we would try to keep parking limited on Route 58, and if there was some thing, you know, some overflow maybe on Adams Street or whatever, parking right in front of the school there, so.
And that would put it back on the backside of the school, to the, how those intersections down the road would be, was at Washington and...
I mean, what started to happen, just what started to happen at Griffin's last week was cars paid attention to the no parking signs until they got past them.
Right.
And started to pull over, and then people started walking down the road, and then people started crossing, and it was kind of a nightmare for the officer up there last Wednesday. So it just got worse, and I'm assuming as this grows, it's gonna get busier. So any location, I think, is gonna be better than Griffin's.
I understand that the soccer, my thought was like the bandstand. I mean, sometimes I think they have close to 1,000 people there, so, I mean, it can handle a large crowd.
I hate to move things, like, I hate to move things all over the, you know, trying out different places, but is it, you know, could we try the North School? Then maybe once school gets out, we can think about Riley Field, where the school activities will be done. I mean, we're planning on doing this most of the summer, right?
Yeah, we usually run through October, actually, yeah.
So even if we could try it at the North School, see how that goes, and with, you know, maybe thinking down the road, maybe have someone give us a schedule.
What if we did it on the three blocks we own and went both ways? If they find parking anywhere along.
Well, I think that then moves into the soccer, because they're down there. Yeah, could you just begin this real quick, do you?
What night is Sunday, Congress?
Sunday night.
Hi.
Hi, Rick Allen, Seventy-four Orange Street. I'm the registrar of Abington New Soccer. I haven't talked about this with the board at all, but just for your understanding for general scheduling purposes. There's between two and four weeks left in the season. The only reason I say two to four weeks is because the way it was scheduled this year, some teams were staggered and started later. But you're looking, I think generally soccer's done second week in June. So, whatever solution you have, I mean, by the second week in June, I don't think there's anything else on the turf. It's probably definitely worth a conversation with Peter Serino just to confirm. But from our purposes, I don't believe we're there after about the second week in June. And I just looked up the boys and girls' track schedules, and they don't have any meets on Wednesdays up here.
Up here, okay. So, I just, I just didn't.
North School, like, you and I spoke, North School makes me nervous, because people are gonna be crossing.
It's, it's just such a bad area anyway to begin with.
We did, I.
And people are gonna park it, and we want to ask whether we ask them or not, or not. And they're gonna be crossing the street there. So, we're gonna need two police officers, officers up there at least.
There's fifty-five defined spots at North School.
And how many are at Griffin's Dairy Farm?
How many are there?
No, parking.
Eighty-two and forty, so you're talking what, a hundred and twenty-two spots?
I just don't think we're gaining anything by going to North School. And I think it's gonna be just as dangerous as Griffin's.
What about, what about if we could put, again, what about at behind the Frollo? Could they go on the dirt track there?
Yeah.
I mean, but again, we got the track and see if sports are going on.
Baseball, football.
If there's anything.
But they, well, it would only be high school baseball that would use on that field there.
I'd hate to see Griffin's Dairy go to waste. That's my only, that's another thing I have. It's like Griffin's Dairy is, you know, we want people coming to that. We want attracting people to that area and really building it up, cause it's gorgeous. And, and the committee that puts it all together, I mean, unbelievable what they do. And I think it would just be a loss if we did it somewhere else. And I'm concerned about the traffic flow at North School. I, I'm, I'm assuming it, it could possibly get worse than it could be at Griffin's Dairy.
Well, and I think Griffin's Dairy's gonna get worse the more it's out there, you know. And I compliment Griffin's Dairy Committee for doing this. It's a great problem to have, I guess. But I'm not comfortable with North School. If we were gonna do anything, I'd rather leave it at Griffin's, I think, than go to North School. I think we're gonna have just too many intersections, and people are gonna be coming from all different directions. And, and people will be parking at the one and out. And they're gonna be, they're gonna park in the church parking lot and.
Quailies?
One of the things I wanted to mention is, so right now, we have six trucks, cause that's what we had talked about starting with. And we actually think more is better. And the reason I say that is it moves the lines quicker. It spreads people out more. You think, oh, it's gonna attract more people. It's kind of the same amount of people, but like on Wednesday, people were in line for a really long time.
Still find people waiting for the taco truck.
Yeah, it doesn't move the traffic of the people. So, if you had, like, again, over we have ten, and half the time, a truck is broken down.
What if we were, the trucks on the three lots that we own, and the stuff we bought up old, the three vacant lots coming in.
Oh, right up front there.
And then just had everyone park wherever they could. They could even park along, which way I think is, that's still.
I'm not sure. It does cinch down there to, to one lane.
Oh, cause of the light out, yeah.
Exactly the way that takes place.
But if soccer is only gonna be there for another couple of weeks, we would have in front of the school, we'd have the parking lots there. People could park up here at Town Hall.
So, I'm sorry, we're not familiar with where you're speaking. Are you talking right down here?
As you're on this road, there's a real estate office on the corner. And after the real estate and the granite, stone place, the town owns all that vacant land coming up the strip before you get to the high school.
Oh, right.
Right, maybe pulling up Route eighteen, there's some dirt parking lots there on the right.
Then maybe all the cars be down this end, and you'd have plenty of room for, you'd have plenty of room for ten trucks there.
So, I can't visualize it. Would we be parking on grass or?
Gravel.
Gravel, okay.
You know, we really should check with DPW, because I know that project's kicking off on whatever he's doing for the bike line, judging by all of the markers going on up there.
Yeah, that's another issue, isn't it, yeah?
I mean, I, I would be, like you said, in favor of trying, you know, we could try a couple of different places, see if it works. It just, North School would just kind of.
Well, if the chief thinks that you can handle North School, and it's actually a better location.
Well, I think, I'll get, yeah. I think it's the unknown, Alex. It's just if, like, we can hit, if we can fit all the traffic on the property, then it's, then it's easily handled logistically. The problem is, is we just don't know how much the trucks are gonna draw. And once they start drawing what the capacity of the parking area is, that's where we're gonna run into a problem. The other thing to do, to do just consider with North, with North School is just the residential properties in there as well. You're gonna have maybe some parking on some of those side streets off of Adams that might create somewhat of a problem with some of the people there. So, if it can be contained to the lot, which we just don't know that it can, then it's a, then it's a great spot, I think. But I just, I'm fearful that it won't be able to be contained. So, I don't know if there's a, if there's a spot that we can assure that, you know, whether it's up in this particular area somewhere where we can assure.
Well, I'd forgotten about the construction going on here. So, that's gonna be probably another month.
Yeah, I mean, I think that puts us into a season where, you know, we'd be fine in another three, four weeks, but.
And Riley Field was out.
Right here?
Yeah.
I mean, that's what I was, you wouldn't even have to use the field. I mean, you get the trucks.
The driveway, like, yeah.
And the bandstand area, right? I mean, it's paved there, and there's bathrooms there, right, that build.
Is there access for the trucks?
Oh, yeah. Yeah, there's a nice bridge they just built.
They can get right across the bridge. Do you know, yeah, what can I say?
The bandstand has been mentioned a few times.
Yes.
I mean, that's, like you said, it's, it's another area. I know on some, some Sundays, I think they have close to a thousand people they've had there.
Right.
And you have Riley Field behind.
And what you could do, if we're gonna do Riley Field, is our three lots we own down here, you can line those and use that for parking.
Well, they've got all theirs.
Yeah, right.
They got the high school that they can walk over from. I mean, we could even, Sue was just saying, we could even set the trucks up in the back parking lot here.
That's another idea, yeah.
You know, Town Hall, I don't know what time the library closes. Town Hall's pretty much emptying out at four, four-thirty.
Close Town Hall.
We put the trucks over on the pavement in front of the snack bar, then what you do is behind Town Hall, we'll park.
Yeah. We got all this, that.
How much parking do we have?
In the high school, they can walk over from there.
Walk over from there.
Here? Yeah, at the Town Hall and Library Complex.
I did a count as well, and there was a hundred and eighteen spaces out here. That's just these two lots right here.
And so they.
We will have people down, you know, on the keel, but I still think, I think this would be a safer area to do it.
And give you a lot of space.
Parking area.
And again, we can get the trucks through that. I mean, I don't know how wide that is there.
Well, if they can't go through the new bridge, when they built the high school, there's a ramp going up that you can drive right up in there, even before the bridge was built, you could drive in there.
You guys bring the trucks up into there? Your truck, the fire trucks or?
Have we gone up?
You get access?
It's a steep angle.
It is a steep.
Have they need careful? What, the lights behind your wheels, what that is, those areas, it's fairly steep. Per.
Might as well.
I just don't make no, personally, I think back here would be safer if you could do it. If you're parking the vacant lots up Glenneveagh Way like you were proposing, I don't know what the curbing is there, if the trucks were able to get up there without popping tires. I'm sure you could solve it. But if it's back here, it's not gonna be as much of a visual draw for all of the traffic on eighteen. That, that could be an issue. If it's back here, you could park anywhere in this complex, and they have everybody walk up here to it and disperse, but.
So, it's up to the board. I mean, I think we could give it a go and try.
Dick, what do you think?
I think you're better off up here. I agree with you with, you know, with safety. That's my big concern down at Griffin's.
Yeah, exactly.
We actually had twelve or fourteen houses parked at St. Bridget's, and they walked up. And thank God the cop was there. He crossed them.
Yeah, because that's, that's an accident waiting to happen, I think.
I agree with you. And fifty-seven thousand dollars would be much better. It could get worse.
I mean, if we put them up here, we could, I mean, we could see if we could get them onto the bandstand. If we can't, we do it.
Right, yeah. I mean, I don't know what that bridge is like, if it's suitable for these trucks to go over it or not.
I'll check with John Stone on that.
But I'd like to move it up here somehow, do it in this town hall.
Okay, so it's, right now, we have six trucks approved.
So, I would make a motion to.
I mean, you're ten. Like I said, it kind of moves everybody along faster.
Increase it to ten, and use the high school, I mean, high school, Town Hall, Library Complex.
Okay, so there's a motion. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, motion to second. Any further discussion? Alright, all in favor of moving it up here and increasing to, you said, ten trucks, Alex?
Ten trucks and up here. One question, somebody sent me a text, whoever you are, thank you. But I don't have your number saved on my phone, so I don't know who you are. But graduation activities, that's the first Saturday in June, correct? So, that wouldn't affect it. But thank you for the text.
Okay, okay, so we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Proposed?
No.
Okay, so we have three, one.
Three, one.
Okay. Passes, okay, so the next is on.
So, you have ten trucks up here.
Okay. Will somebody show us exactly where we're talking about?
Four to seven to four-thirty to seven.
You know where it is. You can show us. Thank you very much.
Just planning on bringing tacos home.
Are we planning on trying to get the trucks into Riley Field?
Yes.
Or are we trying to get the trucks here, in this back parking lot?
If you can get them safely into Riley Field, I am reading them all lined up along the pavement. Actually, you could, I probably couldn't do both sides because I'm aligned to the.
Alright, so Riley Field is a preference if they can fit in there?
Yeah.
Yeah, not, yeah.
I think either one, I think it may matter by each night with what you find up here for crowds.
Yeah.
It may change, but it's the same area.
Alright, good.
Now, we're completely off Route eighteen.
Yeah. Alright, so next is on Fire Chief John Udo for an update on two sixty-seven North Quincy Street.
Thank you. I don't have a lot to report, because there are not a lot of changes from two sixty-seven North Quincy Street. I was up there again this morning. I did a quick ride through, not an inspection, just to see what's going on. The cooperation's really dwindled to nothing. There was very minor cooperation to begin with. I really never received all of the, the bulk, if not, almost all of what we ordered them to do. Initially, there was some cooperation. They were doing what they could, kind of some of the low-hanging fruit items. I received a partial list of all the tenants up there. It does not have enough information whatsoever, and they're aware of that. I never received any more. We never received an engineered map, a plan of the entire land that we had requested. They moved some items, however, there's still a lot of the items directly under the national grid right-of-way wires that are there still today, that they, it appears that they just stopped doing what they were doing. So, I'm done really dealing with them. I'm not gonna waste my time anymore. Right now, it's in the hands of Town Council. And I'm frustrated with the slow pace of the legal system. We're used to getting things done quickly, and I'm learning that's not gonna happen in this case, and I'm aware of that. So, Town Council has all of the documents that I have. They have a massive amount of documents. And they're in the process now of trying to coordinate all that to bring it to the next step, which really is in the court system. This is gonna be a long, slow process. We're keeping our eye on it. But we can order everything you want. At some point, you have to enforce that order. And that's where the court system's gonna come in. So, I'm waiting on Town Council to begin that process, which is gonna be a lengthy process, to really begin remediating things. Really, and I believe a couple of you may have met with the owner at one point as well fairly recently. You're seeing what we're seeing. They're either not able or capable or willing to just do what they're ordered to do. So, we're ready to go to the full court system to, to begin that step.
Okay.
All we can do, I guess.
Yeah, so at this point, thank you, Chief.
Okay.
Next up would be Deputy Police Chief Cutter for an update.
Thank you, Chairman. Just to thank the town manager for inviting me up again to just kind of give you an overview of what has been going on at the police station for the last few months since I've last seen you guys and spoke to you at the last meeting that I did. You know, a lot of the things that I will talk about, and I'll try to move this along, cause I know you have a busy agenda tonight. So, please just interrupt me, and if you have any questions or whatever else on any of the items. But just one of the things that, you know, it's been in the news about the Police Officer Standards Training Commission. You know, the new post commission is coming out on the police end of things with the police reform bill that was passed in January. The majority of that is gonna go into effect July first of this year. So, we have been actively trying to prepare for that. There's been some movement with that. But some of the things that, that I'm gonna see is, the state's gonna mandate seven to eight policies that are gonna be statewide accepted policies that we'll begin to adopt. One of the policies that's important, well, they're all important, but one of them is the use of force policy. We're currently operating on a state use of force policy now. And, but we anticipate that that will change. Nothing has come out from the state on that as of yet. But I am in the process of modifying my policy ahead of the game just to get into some of the key points of police reform that, that the policy, that I anticipate the policy is gonna have. So, we're actively moving forward with that. Recruitment, just to know, you know, we came up with the civil service test. It hasn't, we haven't had the test yet, but we hit the deadline for registering. So, this is the first time we've ever tried to actively recruit for that testing date. You know, with civil services, it's, it's a bit difficult to recruit. It's not like we can, you know, we can motivate these people to come in and take an application from us, knowing that they're gonna get a job with, from us, because of the, the whole statewide system that it entails. But we did try to put out some pamphlets. We tried to recruit in some of the, some of the people that represent the community to try to get community people to take the test. We tried social media a few times to try to broadcast out that date to try to get some interest in taking the police exam. I think statewide, if you talk to anybody else, they'll, they'll tell you the same thing that I'll tell you is that it's just difficult, recruitment is difficult now in the police force.
So, they don't have to be an Abington resident, correct?
Well, they, they get preference, so they don't.
They get preference, but they don't have to be.
Yeah, they don't have to be, yeah. So, but recruitment is, is difficult across all aspects of policing right now. So, so we're, we're no different than anybody else out there, but we did take those steps. And, and I think that was, you know, something from the management study that they brought up, that we should do a more of an active role in recruiting. So, we, we did try to do that for this test coming around. Just some grant stuff that we're doing. We did obtain a thirteen-hundred-dollar grant for a med project from Med Project USA to, to help us incur some of the costs or defer some of the costs with our household pharmaceuticals that we collect. So, so that's a help, so when we go down and destroy those pharmaceuticals, we can pay for that office's time out of that grant. We've also applied for a twenty-thousand-dollar security trust fund grant. This is, we've, we've put the application into purchase exterior vest carriers for the offices. Exterior vest carriers offer a health benefit for the offices. It helps their back, a lot of back issues offices have from wearing the belt. So, the weight is distributed about their body better than a belt. So, so we're hoping to get that grant for that. The other thing those exterior vest carriers will give us, or this grant will give us, is the ability to buy some ceramic trauma plates for front and back of those vests. So, will give our offices added security for the situation if they're going into some type of an active-type shooter, where there's a long gun involved, where rifle rounds are being used. They can very conveniently slip in a front and back plate to, to give them added protection. So, we haven't heard on that yet, but we're hoping to, to get that. I did want to, January first, and I know I was up here after this, but I don't think I had went over this, but I just wanted to bring up a quick letter of accommodation that was issued to Sergeant Stephen Mockland, Sergeant Brian Thiele, and Officer Matthew Farnum. On January thirty-first, they were, they responded down into Waymouth. And I don't know, you guys may, it's a little dated, but you guys may have heard that Waymouth had that shooting down there just at the airbase. So, those three officers were working at that time, and they were commended for their actions that night and going over there to help out Waymouth in such a volatile situation. So, I thanked the efforts of those three officers on, in, in January. The other. I'm sorry. I did have a, another quick accommodation, and this is just a, you know, in line with the management study about commending. I did have another quick accommodation, and this is just, you know, in line with the management study about commending the offices more, I just wanted to make sure that you guys are aware that that process is beginning. I mean, we were doing it in the past, but probably not so formal as we do it now, but March first, I issued a letter of accommodation to Officer Ryan Gillan, who's now a detective, Detective Gillan. On February twenty-second, we had an incident, as reported by the shift supervisor, you were involved in a potentially dangerous situation when a vehicle chased by Waymouth Police Department crashed in Abington and you persevered through the danger until your keen observations and actions led to the identity of the suspect. It appears this vehicle had been involved and hit and run in Waymouth and fled the scene into Abington, it was also reported that the occupants of the vehicle may be in possession of a firearm. Without hesitation, Officer Gillan and the other officers responded to the scene to assist Waymouth Police and Officer Gillan instinctively deduced the probable actions of the three suspects who fled the crash scene and was subsequently maybe able to make a stop on the vehicle of the suspects involved. So that was another letter of accommodation that was issued in March. Just to let you know, the detective unit is up and running, I have a detective sergeant overseeing Detective Gillan, so, you know, that's already been instrumental in us making some charges moving forward. So that was one of my goals, to get that up and running, and that is up and running. Detective Sergeant works during the day, Monday through Friday, and our detective, and Detective Gillan is rotating his shift on nights, so we have pretty good coverage across day and night shifts for the detective units. Just based on the unfortunate incident, I'm sure you guys saw on Rockland, just to give you a heads up, Rockland, they, when the, I'm sure you saw it on the news, but they were able to get the weapon out of the gun rack there. You know, instantly, once I realized that or saw what went on, I was in talks with Rockland to find out where the problem was with that and where, how did this particular gentleman, how was he able to get that weapon out of that rack? I think prior to this incident, we all thought that those racks were infallible and that you couldn't get a weapon out of that rack, but give someone enough time and I guess that they can. So immediately I began to switch over our, we had the same rack type systems, so we still have a couple there, but I'm in the process of either purchasing or reusing some of our other systems to actually lock the weapon into some type of a container. So I believe three or four of my crews is now are fitted with those containers and we're in the process of trying to get them all fitted with that, just to avoid that kind of type of incident that Rockland had. Just, we, you know, we talked about training before, training has been focused on the immediate needs of the department, there were a lot of things that we, I needed to get done, so we're focusing on the immediate needs. All of our officers, with the exception of just a couple, went through our fair and impartial policing training in April, so the whole department went through that, I have two trained instructors. It incorporates fairness, compassion and cultural sensitivity into the training, and that is something that, again, was identified in the management study, and that was completed in April. As well, we're training officers as rape investigators, we had rape investigators trained before, but we've sent a couple extras to that training, to make sure that we have adequate people on shift to be able to handle that. We have an officer that's been, that's going through firearms instructor training now to replace an officer that had left. Our sergeants are attending leadership training, our newest sergeants. Our detectives have just attended how to respond to missing children, I think, you know, I'm very passionate about that, you know, that's a, it's a low probability that that's going to happen, but when it happens, it's devastating. So I just wanted to make sure that my two detectives understand how to respond in those short, we have a short window to try to recover that child when something like that happens, and they've just completed that training there for that. I've also sent two officers to street level narcotics training and it's already producing some enforcement results, which is good. I have two SROs going to Alice instructor training to get them up to speed in anticipation of next year's full opening of the schools, and I have one officer attending the actual SRO, NASRO, basic training. So that's some of the training things that we're trying to get accomplished. One of the management study things was talking about maintaining vehicle tracking, I mean, our vehicle expenses as far as maintenance. DPW has always done that, but on our end, on my end now, I've begun to track it in our in-house system, we have a pretty robust vehicle maintenance tracking system that just wasn't used in years past. So now every time a repair goes through with the vehicles, it gets logged in there and then with a couple keystrokes, I can pull up any maintenance record on any vehicle. So that is in the process as we speak, as I speak. New patch design, I talked about a patch design before, that design has gone up to the high and middle school students, we had a tremendous response, I believe we had thirty or forty different entries. So we've been kind of tweaking those entries, we put it out to our offices, so we put a mirage of the designs for the offices and we had the officers come up with their top five picks, and now the top five picks are going to go out on social media. I had planned on it going out today to have the townspeople vote on it, but my, I was struggling a little bit with creating a survey on Facebook, so I didn't quite get to that today, but hopefully within the next day or two.
You should ask Tim, he can do that.
Hopefully, within the day or two, we'll get those out and we'll come up with a new design, the entries were amazing as far as what the kids put together. So I'm just trying to try to get this done before they get out of school so that we can recognize the winner of that. So that is still a work in progress, but I hopefully anticipate at any moment we'll have that completed. Just to remind to the residents out there that we're getting into the summer months, people are going on vacations, that we do house checks, so I just wanted to put that out there, they just need to call the police station and they can get, they can just let the desk officer know that they're going on a house check and we'll make every attempt, every effort that we can to do that house check for them while they're away on vacation. The other thing I did was I put out for who had an interest in being a civil rights officer, the department never had a civil rights officer in the past, it's recommended that every police department have a civil rights officer, someone that can kind of take a look at some of the case reports that are coming in to make sure that there aren't any issues regarding civil rights. We're luckily, you know, in this community where we don't generally see some of those things, but it's still good to have someone designated to keep an eye out for that. So I do have an officer, Officer Gillan, Detective Gillan now, he is also our civil rights officer for the department. I would also like to, as of yesterday, Officer Ryan Texera has been chosen by Metro Law Enforcement Council as their next SWAT member. So Ryan Texera has been going through the process for two or three months, it's a grueling process, he's required to be physical, I think he's required to shoot at a hundred percent, can't miss anything. And finally, it came down to oral interviews, I believe, yesterday, and some final shooting, and they finally came to the pick. So Ryan Texera is going to be our next officer, working with Metro LEC on the SWAT team. As we go through this, another thing is, you know, monitoring overtime, I'm continuously monitoring overtime, I mean, I know that's always, that's always something that I, I can't, I probably preach to the guys, they're probably sick of listening to me hear it, but I want to be conscious of how much work these guys are getting, and so on a weekly basis, I have one of my sergeants preparing for me a outline of how many hours the department is expending in overtime. And I'm trying to gauge that and, you know, adjust as much as I can as a department to limit that. We are in a very, very busy time, there was an awful lot of officers that didn't burn vacation time over this last year in COVID, and now I'm faced with an awful, as things start to open up, the office, the weather's starting to get good, the offices are two things, one, they want to use their time and enjoy their time, and two, we're getting to the end of the fiscal year. So I'm seeing an uptick in the amount of time that officers are doing, and then for my response, I'm trying, I'm trying to mitigate that by anything that isn't mandated, if I can put off some training for a period of time or anything that I can do on my end, I'm trying to do that to mitigate the effects of that overtime and the time off these guys want. So, but just so you guys know that I'm constantly monitoring those things on a weekly basis. Department's website, Alex, I know I spoke to you about the getting the logs up there, so I've started that process, I think it was sent to the, today was the first day it was sent off to the webmaster. So I anticipate that at least on a monthly basis, we're going to get those logs up on there.
Yeah, just explain that to
Yes, so, you know, we used to, there was a period where we used to put the logs up there and at some point that we drifted away from that. So now, you know, the logs are calls for service and they're required, you know, by law, we're required to keep a log and it's public records, so we're going to take those public records, those logs, and we're going to put them up on the website for people to access, so they can look at our calls for service over the last thirty days or so for the month. So we're hoping to stay on top of that, the first one should be going up for April and then we'll put up May as we go.
Thank you.
And continue along, so. And then just on, you know, one, on recruitment, you know, one of the things in the management study again was highlighting that we were short some female officers, that we would be better off with some female officers. So I just recently gave a tentative offer of employment for a female, bilingual female, which is a huge benefit for us, she reads, writes and speaks Spanish. And so I've given her a conditional officer, she's still in the hiring process, she still has a couple of things to go through, but I anticipate that we'll get her on board within the next thirty days or so to start working. So that's kind of where I sit right now, any questions on anything?
Where are you at for staffing right now, as far as your numbers?
Yes, so we're down a little bit, I, and I, I don't have the number in my head, sorry, Mike, but I believe we're down, I think I have three to four open positions right now. So I think, and by filling this one, if this all goes well, I think I'll have three, three or four that will still be open. My thoughts are, is I'm probably going to have to wait until the next civil service test comes out and the list comes out, just because we're at that, you know, it's kind of like the perfect storm right now, I just, it's difficult to hire because civil services, we're coming close to the test. So the people that are on the list now have been on there for a couple of years, and with that, some of them have decided to do other things, and it's very difficult to get some candidates off civil service right now. So I'm hoping that I can get this particular candidate, and then as soon as I get the chance to get a new list, I'm going to start to work for that hiring to try to get those other positions in there.
So when is the test and when would you get the list?
Sorry, the test is in June, so everyone has to be, is already signed up, is going to take it now, the deadline, I think, was the middle of May, so the test is in June, I would anticipate that maybe within, you know, a month to two after that, that I'll get a list. And then as soon as I get a list, I'm going to start to fill those positions, so it's just, it's a little difficult right now, just because
So the three or four you're down now, does that include any that are out on long-term?
I just have one that's out on long-term military right now, that's the only one, so I don't believe, I don't think that's factoring that position.
That's not factored in.
Yeah, I think that might have, might put me at five positions, but four actual positions that I can hire.
That you can hire, and then that fifth position would be available.
And that fifth position will hold, and I think it's been three years now, you know, by law, we hold it for another couple of years for him to see if he's going to come back, so.
Great.
Any other questions from the board? I had a question, social media, do you have someone assigned to it to do that, or are you kind of just doing the bulk load of it?
Yeah, you're kind of, you're kind of looking at them, so I try to do, I kind of try to do what I can do. Our Nixle platform, we do, I do, the sergeants do put out Nixles, so you'll see a lot of that done by the individual sergeants. And then Facebook, I'm trying to expand out using, you know, Nixle crosses over between Twitter and Facebook, I don't particularly, I like the idea of having a photo on a Facebook screen versus a link to go to a photo. I think there's more bang for the buck to have a picture there on Facebook, so I'm trying to incorporate more Facebook posts without using Nixle, Nixle, you know, has its benefits for townwide notifications in geographical areas and whatever else, but, so no, I don't have anybody specific to that. But, you know, at some point, if I can get increased of staffing, then I'm hoping that I can just have someone that's out there to try to, you know, promote the department and promote the town and do that, it's just, I'm trying to do it on a part-time basis and it does get difficult.
I just didn't know, yeah, I didn't know if there was anyone, because, no, it's, social media is, it's big, but, I mean, as I think we all know, even Facebook is, you know, not as big as the others now and, you know, between Instagram and everything else, just still get someone. K nine, is this still, is he training or?
Yeah, K nine is currently in the academy, he will graduate, I'm talking, he will graduate, I think it's, it's the last week of June, and he'll be out on the road for his first, that will be his patrol school training. He will have not have been to his drug school training yet, and then we'll look at when we're going to send him to a drug school, but the potential is upwards of six months, that he'll be on the street here in Abington at the end of June, until we get him into a, into a drug school.
Will he have a rotating schedule, what will his shift be, do you know?
He's going to be working four to midnights, and his schedule will be rotating, so he'll be working four days on, two off, like the majority of the officers on the four to midnight shift, so.
And the last thing, the patch, I don't know if it's, might be last minute, but, I mean, with town meeting next week, there might be a lot of people there that don't have Facebook or don't have social media, that, I don't know if that's something you want to look at, you know, a flyer for town meeting that people could vote and then leave it in a box there or something as they're leaving.
Okay.
Or just something, you know?
Yeah.
If there's a final five or top five.
Yeah, I think, so town meeting is on the twenty-four?
Next Monday.
Okay, and I was trying to catch, I'm just trying to catch on, before the seniors get out for their last day, it might even be, it might even be close, it's probably close to that, but, but no, definitely, I'll definitely look at, look at that, Kevin, I see if I can do that.
I know I should.
Okay.
You'll hear a collective scream around town.
Any other questions for W G Cutter?
No, thank you very much.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, David.
So next up is the cable advisory committee, the Comcast license renewal.
Good evening, my name is Pete Walters, and I'm the chairman of the cable advisory committee, we've been at, working on the Comcast contract for the last two years. At any rate, we have a contract that both parties have agreed to, William Hedwick, our attorney from KP Law, has reviewed it and you should have an executive summary. Basically, it'll be for ten years, effective June first, it will give, we will get a franchise fee of four point three percent per year, which we've determined will be enough to sustain the cable network. We will get also in addition eighty-six thousand over the ten years, eighty-six hundred per year. And the public channel in approximately twenty-four to thirty-six months will become HD channel. And I'm told that we can put any of the particular programs on that if it pertains like a football game or that kind of a thing. That's basically the nuts and bolts of it, the rest is the legal speak for who's responsible for what, and again, our attorney has gone over the contract and has approved that portion of it as well. Any questions?
Just so the residents know, the four point three we're getting now, is that about what we were getting before?
We, actually, the fee was four point oh five, well, the first contract we had had three different fees on it, and the four point three is about the mid length of that. And again, we were looking at what would be needed to sustain the channel for the next ten years.
Well, I personally have read this and heard way too much about it.
And again, are there any questions?
Alex might be asked.
No questions.
No, nothing.
But I would like to just make this distinction, the cable advisory committee is not part of Abcam. Cable advisory committee is a town-appointed board that negotiates the contracts with Comcast and Verizon, and ten to fifteen years, this will be a ten-year contract, correct? And the Verizon fifteen-year contract is up in about
Two years.
Two years.
So we'll start working on that.
We still need a cable advisory committee because they'll be starting to work on that contract, and then we're good for the next ten to fifteen years. And the fee that they're talking about, the point, four point three, is, and every subscriber, whether it's Comcast or Verizon, if you look at the bottom of your bill, there is a fee down there. And that's the money that funds the Abcam, which is a private corporation, but it goes through the town and funds the cable studio and everything, and that's what's bringing you this TV show and everything that the cable is doing. So I just wanted to make that clear, so everyone knows there's two things, but thank you and your lovely assistant there for all the hard work that I know you have done over the last year or so on this.
You're welcome, no other questions?
No other questions from the board?
And again, we would request that all of you sign the contract before June first, because that's when they would like the contract to go into effect, thank you very much.
And the selectmen is the governing body of the contract, the contract is actually with the town and the town, basically, subcontractor. The contract is actually with the town, and the town basically subcontract to Abcam, for lack of a better word. So the selectmen appoint the authority.
Thank you. I give some say.
One quick question. Recall in seventy-four Orange Street, the trend right now has been to cut the cord, where people have, they cut their cable service and they go maybe to online internet services. Is that part of this calculation that, you know, as a?
If you go on the state website, they do have the Department of Telecommunications. I've looked at, especially the Comcast numbers, they've pretty much remained the same. They're approximately, as of nineteen, twenty-seven hundred and ninety-five subscribers, and it's gone up as high as twenty-eight something and a little bit lower. It's remained the same, pretty much. And what the future brings is, you know, we're trying to look for it as much as we can, but again, I understand what you said. But it does come only from the two cable companies.
Okay.
Thank you.
Anything else from the board? Anyone else in the audience have any comments, questions? So that's it. Let's take a motion.
Yeah, so we'll need a motion to approve the Comcast license renewal as submitted and suggested by town council.
I'll have that motion. With first and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous?
And Mr. Chairman, I will accuse myself from number eight.
Okay. So next up is the vote to approve the community host agreement for Nashmac LLC.
Yep, so this is the, I think, the third or the fourth host agreement. It's pretty much the same substances that were in the other ones. Mike Nashawati is here, I think he may be, if you wanna jump up and just say a few things, but I think you guys all know him now, he's been here a few times. But we've gone over this with council, like I said, it's most of the same conditions and, and, you know, payments to the town are in here, so there's really no difference. But Mike, why don't you plug your business while you're here?
Yes. Good evening, members of the board. Michael Nashawati, I'm the founder of Nashmac LLC. We are a adult-use cannabis business who's hoping to open in Abington. If the board is gracious enough to sign the agreement, that's in front of you. We have plans to potentially be opened for retail sales by the end of this year, and the production facility would follow shortly thereafter. The timeline could be moved up based on our priority economic empowerment status, social equity status on the state level. But as a new industry, sort of, we'll see how that goes. I wanna thank you all for, you know, working extra hard to sort of get this on the past town agenda. And, you know, we're very, very excited to have this opportunity.
Thank you, Mike. Does the board have anything on this? Any comments, any questions for Mike?
No.
No? Good.
Thank you.
Anyone in the audience have anything, any questions, comments on this?
What is the address again?
Yep, the address of the facility, it's six seventy-eight Adams Street. It's a standalone house in the front and L-shaped warehouse in the back. The property is technically somewhat split, is also a fair, what the landowner calls a garage. It's a warehouse with a couple bays on the north side of the property, or the south side, I'm not sure. But we'd be taking the main house in the front and the L-shaped warehouse on the back of the lot.
And Mike, just, you know, correct me if I'm wrong, this is, the process from here will be, Mike and I will enter into this agreement. Mike will file with the Cannabis Control Commission and the Planning Board at the same time, and you'll go through the.
Yeah, I can just quickly, the sort of timeline would be, following the execution of this agreement, we would schedule a community meeting. We would notify the abutters where this meeting would be held. At that point in time, the town could come. Anybody in the abutters or not, you know, share questions or concerns about the location or, you know, what we'll be doing there. And that's our opportunity to sort of work with the constituents to try to resolve those issues. At that, after that, we would have a site plan approval process with the planning board. And, you know, that's where the particulars of the location could be addressed. And concurrent with the site plan approval process, we would have a pending application to the Cannabis Control Commission. My belief is that they give provisional licenses on place. You take your provisional license, you do your bills out, you work with the town and the planning board to build the facility out. And once you finish building out the facility, you would call up the Cannabis Control Commission, apply for your license to commence operations. They come do an inspection, and then the next week or so, you get your final license from the state Cannabis Control Commission to commence operations.
Okay. Don't give anything further?
Nope.
There's a lot of pieces to the, to the, for the planning board's site plan review process, including security. And all those concerns that many people may have, but, you know, it's a pretty regulated industry that hasn't seen any real issues since the fresh shops came onto the market.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so you guys have the host community agreement in front of you, if you guys wanna review that. I'll maintain the motion if we have one.
I'll make the motion to approve the community host agreement with Nashmac LLC.
I'll second the motion.
We have a first and a second. Any further discussion on it? Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So it's three, zero, and one abstention? So next up is a vote to appoint the SWPA Stormwater Permitting Authority. Scott, do you wanna touch on this?
Yeah, so we've been talking about this quite a bit. This is all part of the MS four. It's the regulations that we've been adopting. They come down from the federal government to the state to us, and basically it's, you know, that we have to, you know, make sure all of our stormwater doesn't, you know, pollute the environment or whatever. And that would, that when anybody files for a permit, they have to apply, you know, and put together a plan. What we're doing here is we're putting the, you're gonna vote the people who are gonna be responsible for the administration of this. So it's gonna be the director of public works, the planning board chairman, the conservation commission chairman, the health agent, and the building commissioner. So they'll be the ones who actually enforce this bylaw. And I think they'll probably, you know, work with the planning board to do that.
Okay. Any questions from the board?
No question.
Questions, Ken?
I'll make that motion to appoint the above named people to this. What is this idea?
The positions are, again, the director of public works, the planning board chairman, the conservation commission chairman, the health agent, and the building commissioner.
So move.
Okay, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Any further discussion on this? All in favor of this motion? Say aye.
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 Opposed? It's unanimous? Right. So next up, we have complaint by Bill Creighton on zero and twenty-two Helm Street.
Evening. Evening, Chair and board members. My name is Attorney Donald Nagel, and I represent Kathy and Bill Creighton, who submitted a complaint to this board regarding zero and twenty-two Helm Street. And they asked me to speak on their behalf tonight to try to emphasize the importance of this issue. Namely, it is a plethora of unauthorized activity at that location. Trucks, soil brought in, filling of land without approval, which may likely be within wetland jurisdiction, both state and local bylaw. You know, boat, storage, processing, soil processing and disposal, gravel crushing, heavy equipment storage, boat salvage. All of these activities, to my understanding, have not obtained any approvals from the town, from the state for that matter, with regards to wetlands jurisdiction. You just voted on MS four, that's stormwater requirements from the feds. There's filling of land that is subject to flooding on this property without any approvals. Approvals would require a compensatory storage of stormwater. Well, that storage of stormwater, untreated stormwater, is on the Creitons' property and in their basements. Diesel trucks are starting at three and four in the morning with headlights shining into their bedrooms. No approvals. The owner has not come before any of the boards, to my understanding. This is not dissimilar to, to a, a matter at Adams Street with Pat Kearney. He's experiencing the same unauthorized activities. In that instance, just to put this in context, not to veer off the subject here, but in that instance, there were four orders issued by different boards. Still, nothing has been done on. So in this particular situation, I implore this board to take quick and decisive action. Other neighbors are implicated, are impacted as well. The Grams are here, Bob and Mary of Mamlet are here, they're impacted as well. So, you know, there's two neighborhoods that I know of so far that are, that their rights are being violated indiscriminately with impunity. And apparently, these people think that they can get away with it. And I ask this board to stand up for these people and to take decisive action to ensure that these people have, to protect these people's rights to acquire enjoyment of their own property. How you do that is in your hands. And I can't, I would not, pretty supposed to suggest how you all do your job. But I would, I would ask you to take quick and decisive action. I know you have capable town council, and this situation is causing current and imminent harm to neighbors, which I believe would warrant a temporary restraining order enforceable by the court and by a sheriff. And I ask, I ask the town to move quickly on this, as well as for the Kearneys and the other neighbors that are, they're having to just put up with this without any apparent effective response by the town. Answer any questions? I did submit a letter, which I basically just summarized to the board, and I attached a very well-written, very thorough summary of the problems that I just highlighted, written by the Creitons. And their health is being affected. You know, it's not just an inconvenience. Their physical health is being affected by this, by this issue, and I would ask that the, that the town act quickly and decisively.
Good.
I have a question. Was a, so for the noise complaint, was a police, was a police report filed for that?
Yes. Bill Creighton. Bill Creighton, fifty-three Vineyard Road, when you were on the board of health.
Yeah.
It was requested that the, when the truck, the diesel truck was starting up, that we called the police.
Yes.
We did. We did a number of times, we called the police and put on a record, and I believe they sent a cruiser there. I don't know, I never saw the police reports, but we did call the, the police phone number, not nine-one-one, the other phone, the business line. I believe the Grams also did call them too.
Okay.
And it's still, it's still, it's still waking us up. It's still, my wife has health issues, serious health issues, and it's waking her up all the time, waking us all up.
Okay.
Robbie Graham, twenty-three Vineyard Road. Yeah, I called a couple of times on the noise, three in the morning, and they did send cruisers down. And I think that he spoke to the gentleman that starts the truck, and he said he was gonna move it out, but sometimes he'd run for an hour. And then he'd, he'd park his trucks, so the headlights were coming in our bedroom, you know, at three in the morning. So I did leave a note on his windshield one day. I went over, went through the woods, and I didn't go and miss the owner's property, I just put a note on his windshield. So it did kind of, he parked his truck the other way, so we didn't shine the lights in, but it was still noise.
At what time is this in the morning?
This was like, I think it was three thirty in the morning one time, when I called, I called the police. I called it, not the nine-one-one, but I guess the female dispatcher.
The business line, yeah.
And she sent the police down.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
So just before we go any further, Scott, do you wanna touch on this? I mean, there is a.
Yeah, so, I mean, some of the stuff that I handed out that was not in the packet from Nancy was just information from Sean Riley's office, who had put together some stuff on the property, and I think there was a, a letter from Marshall Adams suggesting that it was, there was some grandfathered status to the property. I think that, you know, together that information, along with the complaint, we'd be probably well-served to give this all off to town council.
Have them look at it.
Yeah, let them do a full review of, of the information that's coming in, and then the information in the complaint.
Mr. Nagel, you stated that they haven't been to any town boards?
That's correct. That's correct. I do believe for.
According to the Secretary for the Conservation Commission, they received a negative request for determination, twice, I believe. So they would have gone to conservation, and according, I haven't read it, but according to a negative determinant of applicability, there were no wetland issues there. And I understand, and you probably know this too, that DEP has been out there, and Greg DeSensis from DEP said there were no wetland issues.
Yeah, that is, with all respect, incorrect. There are, there is wetland jurisdiction, that land is within wetland jurisdiction.
So the conservation.
And Bill has been placed in, within wetland jurisdiction without an order of conditions, and Greg DeSensis is involved. And he said that that, that that is subject to the town. The town is the issuing authority, and it's up to the town to take enforcement action with regard to that.
According to the Conservation Commission, it was a request for the determination of applicability, and he went and got that, and it was negative.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not aware of that, but what I am aware of is that the idea that these activities are grandfathered.
I'm talking wetlands. I'm just talking to wetlands. You stated they hadn't been to any boards.
They got an order of conditions like in two thousand eight.
Okay, so they've been to boards, so my point is, my point is that they have been to some boards, whether I agree with it or anyone agrees, they have been to some boards.
With regard to the activities that are being conducted today, they have no approvals for them. They may have gotten some approvals in the past.
You stated there were wetland issues, and you stated they weren't to. You stated there were wetland issues, and you stated they weren't to any boards.
The, the activities that are going on right now, sure, are subject to wetlands jurisdiction, and he, and they don't, there's no approval for them. Yet, there may have been, they may have been before Conservation in the past, and there's a pending certificate of compliance and, to DEP, because it was a superseding order of conditions that was issued by DEP, and there's a pending request for a certificate of compliance, that is, I do know that, and that is pending. But what I'm talking about is activities that are going on right now. Not talking about the past, but with regard to activities that are going on right now, there's no approvals, and the owner has not appeared before any board to obtain any of those approvals. And with regard to the zoning enforcement officer asserting that these activities are grandfathered, is frankly absurd, and I implore this board to stand up and do something about it, because it seems like that people can get away with it in this town. And nobody's standing up and saying, no, you gotta follow the rules, and as a result, your citizens are suffering. The Creitons, they have health issues, and it's being exacerbated by this. And you're arguing with me about whether they went before the Concomit...
No, I'm not arguing with you, you made a statement that they haven't been to any boards, and that's not true.
For the activities, for the activities that they're conducting right now.
Okay, so now that you clarify, but they have been to other boards, they have been to boards...
Right now, depositing soil and processing soil...
They have been to boards in this town, correct.
They're depositing and processing soil on that property, placing them in wetland jurisdiction. They have not gone to the Conservation Commission to get approvals for that.
I just want the people watching this to know the truth, and they have been to some boards.
I just want to know the truth.
Okay?
With regard to...
That's my point.
With regard to past activities, but you're just clouding the issue.
Yeah, no disrespect, this was...
Oh, I'm clouding the issue?
Yeah, you're clouding the issues.
No disrespect, Alex, the last thing I'm seeing is 2008, that's...
I understand, but I talked to the Secretary of the Conservation Commission on Friday and asked her, and she said they'd done the filings they needed.
Oh, that's fair enough.
And that's all I can go by.
That's fine.
The other stuff is another issue.
And I asked the board, and I asked the board through the chair, I asked the board through the chair, what will this body do about it?
And we're gonna discuss.
We're gonna discuss that now.
I just, I was letting you speak, are you, are you finished? Okay.
Thank you very much.
Okay.
So, go ahead.
I was gonna say, you have, you have plenty of information in front of you, and like Mike has stated and Alex has talked, it seems that there are some things that have gone, and it has been some time. What does the board think on this? I mean, I would like to see, we could send it to council and have them take a look at this.
Yeah, I think we absolutely have to...
They go through, we'll have them go over this, go through all the paperwork that's been submitted here, and have them, you know, pine in and give us...
Is it no different than some of the other things we're looking at in town, and I think they need a ruling from town council? If he needs to go to zoning or submit a site plan, then that's what he's gonna have to do. I do know DEP has been out there, I don't know the status of that, so I think you would have to get the file from Nancy and give to town council also.
Yep.
But I think town council needs to redo the entire project. We've had, as everyone knows, several of these pop up, and we need to get a handle on. He may have the permits, it may be grandfathered, I don't know, but we need town council to look at it.
Let's have town council look at the entire file, go through it, and...
Have, has...
That's, was gonna be my next point, does the fire chief have anything to say on this? Is that what you were gonna say, Alex?
Yeah, just briefly on this, I knew this was on the agenda tonight, and I have received some of the emails from the citizens keeping me up to date, I talked to some today, I drove that neighborhood, I also drove in there, I spoke to the owner that's there. I'm not seeing any major fire hazards, I know you don't wanna hear that, and I know it's probably difficult to believe that, but it's not the Ritz, it's an industrial property, but it's orderly, and it's crowded, and there are numerous boats, there's a couple of tanker trucks which are for water. I was informed that the boats that are stored there, it's like a dry marina, basically, that they remove all the fuel and that, from that, I didn't physically check that, but it, you know, it appeared to be orderly, we are able to get in there. There is no refuse around, this is not North Quincy Street, this is not remotely. It is a crowded land area, it's not the Ritz, I get it, and I do understand, I don't know what the zoning issues are, I do not know what, if there's limitations on the amount of vehicles or boats that they're allowed to have, I don't know what their hours of operation are, or if they're starting trucks at, you know, two o'clock in the morning, that obviously all these are issues that really the zoning officer is gonna have to take a look at to see what's allowed, but for a fire safety issue, because this is my concern as well, it's not a major one. I'm not saying it's not existent, but it's, you know, we also have used car lots, we have a number of things throughout town where there's crowded lots. I am concerned about a property just to the north of this, we're gonna be checking into that, but I believe that's a separate parcel entirely, so. I know that some of the correspondents from, you know, they are concerned about the fire lanes and like that, and you're not wrong, but it's, it's doable, you know, from what we saw, so.
I have a question, are all these vehicles licensed with the town that is on this property?
I don't know if you guys can speak on that?
Are they boats?
A mix of everything.
There's a lot of cars and trucks on there too.
Yeah, no, but I'm, I'm just saying, and I appreciate you guys coming up here and talking about this, and also, you know, you know, I have to say this, you know, we're seeing a trend here, you know, you know, different properties, and I, I, I just have to say that I really wish we had some more clarity, and actually some, if properties are grandfathered, the documentation from Marshall Adams, we should have that. I, I, at this point, I'm tired of taking word from him, and we need to, you know, just from word, we need the actual documentation for this. You know, I, I feel bad for the neighbors for this, and I understand, you know, this property, you know, business, whatever it is, if it's zoned for industrial, I get it. But, you know, at some point, we need to be holding things accountable, and, and this is, this is a recurring thing that we need to address.
Thank you, Mr. Hagerd, if I make a minor note here, there is, with regard to zoning compliance, there is a resonance on one of those three parcels that are contained in this, so there's apparently residential and commercial development going on, it's a, it's a business district, you know, off Route 18, but zoning relief is clearly, in my mind, clearly required for this, and similar to these other issues that appear to be a problem here, is that rather than just allowing these people to continue their activities in violation of our bylaws, and then just say, we'll go get an approval, make them stop doing the activity, removing the unlawful vehicles or what, whatnot, and bring peace to the neighbors, and then let them come in and apply. But to allow them to continue to operate in violation, and then go through the boards, which, you know, allow them to do it anyway, when arguably, they're not even allowed to do it. So, I would think, in terms of my urgent request to make prompt action, and that is, have them stop first, remove illegal, cease legal activity, remove illegal equipment, and then have them come in and apply for a permit, which they should've done to begin with.
Mr. Nagel, and I appreciate your opinion on it, again, there's, there's two sides here, and I'm not taking either one, but this is why we gotta look into this, so I appreciate your opinion on the matter.
Yeah, yeah, thank you very much, and I, I don't, you know, pretend to, to do your business, but I just feel that this is urgent enough that would require that the activity cease first, and then proper applications be submitted to the, to the respective boards.
And, yeah, and this, like you said, looks like it goes back, I mean...
Ten years.
Well, over ten years, I mean, it looks like it was all over ten years with, you know, zoning approvals and appeals, and going through land courts, so there is a history here, I do see that, so, again, I think the board will weigh in and we will move forward.
I think, Mr. Chairman, I also think it would be important too, that, you know, for this zoned industrial area, or, you know, for this property, what are the allowed hours of operation? Two AM and three AM seems, doesn't seem right to me.
I mean, it is a commercial zone, but directly above residential, and the neighbors are, are impacted.
For next meeting too, we can get, we can go over that and look, get some more information.
Yeah, I'd like this on the, well, it'll be the first meeting in June.
Yeah, next is the town meeting, but...
And town council could...
I'm sure we can get something in writing by then.
By then, we could get town council to look at this.
Probably longer before then, we'd get something that can distribute to the board.
Yeah, let town council look at it, and follow up at the first meeting in June, hopefully by then, we can get some more clarity and some information. Okay. Do we need anything on this, to send it to council, or will you work on that?
No, I think that's prudent, I have no problem doing that.
Okay. It seems to be this way, we'll, we're gonna have our town council take a look at it, we'll get some more documentation as far as the hours of operation in the first meeting in June, hopefully we'll have an answer by town council by then, and we can, you know, look at it again and continue this.
And if we could also look into making sure that all the vehicles are licensed with the town as well.
Okay. Any other further requests from the board? I think that'll pretty much cover it, if town council's looking at, they're gonna look at the entirety of it, they're not gonna just focus on one area.
Anything that Nancy has zoning or conservation to...
Yeah.
Anything, do you know, is anything for planning board? Not to put you on the spot, but since you're here.
Rick Collins, 74 Orange Street, I'm a member of the planning board. The owner came before us probably a year ago, because there was a legal filling going on without a permit. So they had to come in retroactively, if this sounds familiar, and apply for a permit for an area that they had filled in. And at the time, Mr. Creighton had brought up that the information that the owner had provided to the Conservation Commission was not accurate. The planning board did not feel we could, however, overrule what the Conservation Commission had determined, which was that there was no further action needed. So what we said was, as long as the conservation permit remains in effect, the fill permit remains in effect. But that's all we've had him come before us, I think, since he did, about ten years ago that might be in there, he came in with an idea for a athletic facility, a turf field athletic facility, but that's the only thing he's come in for, besides the fill permit in the past ten years or so.
Okay, thank you.
So, we would want planning, zoning, conservation, and everything to go to town council?
Yep.
At, at that subject, planning board meeting, it was determined, Mr. Noonan said he brought in 230 cubic yards of dirt, the limit is 250 without a permit, so he said he brought in 230 cubic yards, and I'll get water in my backyard that he did not get previously. Then he asked, and he got permission for 400 additional cubic yards of dirt, and at that meeting, he stated, on the west side of the property, will be 16 feet of additional fill, 16 feet deep, or high. That's what he stated at the meeting.
Does it drop off 16 feet there?
There's a drop off, so he's gonna add 16 feet of fill, according to what he said, not anybody else...
Is that as you go down the road on the left side?
Left hand side, which is the end, and that's what he stated at that meeting, not anybody else.
How close is that to the wetland, 'cause out behind helps with the...
That's where it is, the town wetlands are back there. So if he added 230 cubic yards, and I got water in my basement now, if he adds 400 additional for that, what am I gonna get now? So I get that, we get noises, trucks starting, of course, right now in summertime, the diesel doesn't have to idle as long as it does in the wintertime, but come winter again, it's gonna be idling in there for an hour again, and all this.
So, is he renting out spaces for these trucks, and their trucks are going out at three o'clock in the morning?
I'm sorry, I'm running you, I don't know what he's doing. I've been to the town clerk's office and the building inspector's office and asked, what's the name of the business on that property? There is no record in the town hall, the name of the business.
My point is, do these trucks go out and then come back at night?
They leave early, early in the morning, and I don't want them to come back, 'cause I'm at work. So there is no record of the business. I did hear a name at one of these meetings, but if you look at the Secretary of State's website for businesses, the name I heard at these previous meetings is not on the Secretary of State Corporation database as a legal business. What's the name of the business that's operating all this stuff out there?
But is it a daily truck, or trucks that go in and out, park there overnight, come back?
Every, it's in the morning, in the morning, expect to be woken up five to six days a week, definitely five, sometimes six. I don't know when to come back, 'cause I'm off, I'm going to work.
Okay. Fire chief...
Yeah, there's one guy, he leaves at like 3:30 in the morning, and then I've seen him come back in the afternoon, so he...
What kind of truck is it?
It's a tractor trailer, you can see the, like the, you can see the lights all the way down, like, you know, so it's definitely a trailer on there, I don't, I never really saw what it looked like though.
Okay, thank you.
I just went to the owner today, I asked his question, what are the different businesses in there, similar to North Quincy Street, and he immediately emailed me a complete list of the different sub-businesses that are there, that kind of rent small spaces, what they are, contact information, like that, this is exactly what I've been looking for from North Quincy Street, he gave this to me forthwith, which the fire department has just for our contacts. Separate subject, but on all of this together, because we're, obviously, we're seeing a theme here, and I'm trying to just streamline this for everybody's sense, and Scott, I'm not trying to speak for you, and this, I'm just raising a question, if this would be a possibility, because I think we're gonna see more of these. If somehow, and we don't need to do this tonight, we can talk separately, if maybe the town comes up with some type of a committee or group with representatives from my department, building department, probably the Board of Health, perhaps the planning board, the zoning board, yourself, in-town council, or whomever should be part of these, get us all in the same room when we have problem issues like this, and even though the separate boards may have to take their votes, maybe it could be some type of a subcommittee or something to get everybody on the same page, to avoid some of the issues that we keep having in town. I'm not sure if that's even in the town charter or bylaw, if you can do that, but...
Scott is working on something similar to that, maybe not with all the board members, but...
It, it just seems like you don't like the answer from one board, you go get the answer you want from another board, and I think, to your point, chief, it would be nice to have it more than one person...
Everyone in the same room, yeah.
Yeah.
And we've obviously had an issue with building commissioner, and I think the ball's been dropped on several properties here in town, but I think Scott is working on some sort of inspectional services.
Yeah, we wanna, you know, some sort of a system where if a complaint like this comes in, that it, it doesn't get dropped, it doesn't get pushed off, it doesn't, you know, not looking for excuses, so that it gets, it gets tracked from the beginning to the end and followed through, that there is a clear path, it's not everybody pointing fingers. Similar of what you and I had talked about also, is that there'd be sort of a task force that we would have with your department and the building department, and, you know, hopefully a planner someday, and they can look at this and address everything right away and know what the answers are. In this particular case, I think, you know, the first thing to establish is whether, what the rights are that this individual has, you know, what was approved, when was it approved, is he properly and legally situated, and if not, then we'll take care of that. But that's our first answer, and then I think we, you know, bundle up what we've gotten from, from the complainants and from, you know, our own records, and we send that off to town council to sort of do that review, I think that it'll be a lot quicker, a lot more efficient at this point. But I think overall, I think you're right, I think we see, especially on this Route 18 corridor, we're starting to see it, but there's areas in town where I think we do have to address this, that I think for a long time, people have been doing what they wanna do, the, after a while, they just assume that it's okay, you have creep... do, the, after a while, they just assume that it's okay, you have creep, scope creep, and then all of a sudden, you know, before we know it, we have a situation. So, yeah, we wanna absolutely get to, get going on that and start cleaning that up.
Just looking to streamline, I know how much, how many minutes the town departments put into this, and, you know, North Quincy Street, we work very well together, and then, you know, now we're waiting for town council, like to get them involved a little rapidly, but then, you know, we realize some of the boards, we can't speak for the boards, but we, you know, if we get everybody together to streamline it for the town side, for the resident side, and for the business side as well, you know, there may be just a way to streamline this, but, thank you.
I agree.
I think that's a great idea.
Thank you, Chief.
Much like the liaisons that we could have on our board, you know, to other boards.
For another night. It's not on the agenda.
Pat Kearney, 652 Adams, might I just also suggest to the board that if you do appoint a committee like this, and include maybe, maybe one citizen representative and one business community representative that aren't in town hall or aren't on any boards?
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So that doesn't need a vote, you're just gonna?
Yeah, I'll hand it all off to council and ask them to expedite it.
And we'll have it on the agenda for our first meeting in June, for an update.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you, Scott. Okay. Nothing further on that, we have the town manager report?
Yeah, I just have nothing for you, nothing new, other than what we've already gone over on the agenda, where everything's sort of geared towards being ready for, for town meeting, and obviously, we've discussed the, the search committee, it was kind of our other big thing since last week, is go on with that, so.
Okay.
All right, are we going into executive session?
Yes.
Yes. Okay, so if someone wants to make a motion to go into executive session, Mass. General Law, Chapter 39, Section 23B, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining with union personnel?